All right, it's seven o'clock. We're going to get this meeting started. Thank you all for coming. Welcome. We're going to have to excuse Commissioner Reed. He's not here today. Which brings us to less than a quorum until we get to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the oath of office for our new commissioners. So send me please, square in our new, my new commissioners.
I do.
All right.
Uh, we have two new commissioners that were just ratified last night. And that's Isaac Thomas and Andrew Frank. We're not there, so I know you're standing over there.
Okay, we have to take pictures.
Yes, we have to take pictures. All right, let's take pictures. Okay. Uh, Rachel Reina?
Aye.
State Attorney?
Aye.
Andrew Frank?
Have been appointed?
Have been appointed.
Oh wait, sorry. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution, uh, of the state of Utah.
The Constitution of the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge my duties?
And that I will discharge my duties?
Of my, of my office with fidelity?
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. You guys want to come up and say grace? I didn't call her first. That's good. Thank you. New as much girl. Not as bad as yours.
Almost.
We didn't have it up here.
It's not like this house.
Yeah, we had, we had commissioners that were used, like, um, someone in the city council used their computers as opposed to printing out staff. They were open to screens too. I don't have my help because it wasn't worth that. I, it's a distraction.
Okay.
But, that works pretty nice. Now that you're both officially in here, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is consent approval of our planning commission minutes from July tenth, twenty twenty-four. Ken, you have?
Yep, I do. I will motion that we approve.
Did you guys get a, before you motion, sorry. Did you guys get a chance to review the packet?
I did.
I did.
Perfect. Do you have any issues with what we did last time?
No.
Or any typos or anything like that?
I did not send any major typos.
Perfect. Okay. Just wanted to make sure, since you knew you got time for that. Now.
All right, well, I motion that we approve our planning commission minutes for July tenth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, well, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was all of us. Minutes approved. Perfect. All right, that moves us to Agenda Item Number Four, which is discussion, action, recommend to grant preliminary plat approval for Okalo subdivision located at approximately two sixty-five Larson Lane. Jenny, can you introduce what we're looking at tonight?
Absolutely. Thank you Chair, giving we commissioners. So this, uh, this is preliminary plat approval. To bring the commission up to speed, we have adopted last November-ish a new subdivision ordinance. And that new subdivision ordinance requires the preliminary plat to come to this body for approval. And all other approvals with the subdivision are done from the Administrative Land Use Authority, which is defined in our code as most members of our project management team. So we kind of piggyback those meetings together. Uh, but this particular approval comes to the planning commission. So we have the plat up here. You'll see a number of red boxes. These are the engineer's comments with corrections. And, uh, I'm happy to go through any that the commissioners have questions on. We have a memo from the engineer where he calls out a, a couple of items that need to be addressed before final approval would be given on the subdivision. And I'll just review those for the record. So the first item is to submit plat to the Weaver County Surveyor's Office for review and receive approval. They need to address all the red line comments here on the plat. Include any required easements for drainage, sewer irrigation, et cetera, on the plat. The public road that ends in the park should have parking or a turnaround area for vehicles to prevent vehicles from parking in front of the residences. That's this area here. And I should mention that the developer and I spoke earlier on the phone and we talked about a lot of these issues prior to the meeting. And they are present here if you would like to ask additional questions. Um, to obtain approval from Northview Fire District for the turnaround areas and dead ends to ensure that they'll meet their requirements. Uh, number six we had in bold because we do need to work through the utilities that'll be coming through the loved property and what that looks like. So we've talked about a number of options and we'll nail down what that looks like with the Administrative Land Use Authority. Clarify who will own and maintain the parcels A through D and the detention pond and include a plat narrative on the final plat. And they will provide the addresses from our engineer's office and then they'll add those to the plat. We do also have a planning memo from the contracted planner. I should say that the date is actually August eighth, not July eighth when, when they provided this memo. Um, there are a few key issues and concerns. Some of them are the same as the engineer. The, the land use authority and the developer identified the potential issues associated with the underground utility connections, easements. And we will continue working through those to make sure that the long-term goals of the city are met with utility access. The general plan and zoning ordinances were used to evaluate the Okalo development. We did adopt this by master development agreement and that has been balanced against the master development agreement with the, the plat that was, um, provided here. So the contracted planner does recommend that the planning commission approve the preliminary plat as reviewed and upon, are subject to the resolutions on the utility connection issues and any other conditions that the planning commission identifies are necessary. And I'd like to bring to the commission's attention that along with our discussion earlier with the developer, these, this came to us, uh, kind of originally through a diff, a, a few application processes. And one of those was the cluster development ordinance, which required the buildable area to be outlined on the plat, which still remains on the plat, which is a great resource for us in the future. But we wanted that further defined in the legend to identify that this is not an easement recorded on each lot and to differentiate the easements that will be on any of the lots, providing the utilities for irrigation ditches or any other utility easements that might be required to provide utility access to the neighborhood. So we have, I just, we have already identified that and talked to the developer about ways that they can address outlining the buildable area without having it identified by the county as an easement on each lot.
Which will fix all of that. There's a couple easements that need adjusting, especially that eighteen foot one.
Yes.
So I've got questions about that. But do you mind explaining what progress we made on getting those three utility lines into there?
Yes, we have to. Welcome. Nice to have you. Nice to be here tonight in front of you again. And welcome to the new funding commission members. So nice to be here. Uh, yeah, we are, so there's a couple of different options that we're exploring. Uh, one of those would be, so I'll just go here and point. So the easement is coming along right here right now. So we've talked to, uh, Public Works and also the city engineer. Uh, they are requesting an additional width here, some additional width here, which we can do. Uh, and so we're talking, uh, we're, we're talking about maybe doing an easement there. Uh, if that doesn't work, uh, the other option is we will run them along the west side of the property. And we will mod, make some modifications to this shed right here. Uh, and we will, we will give full easement along that side of the property. So those are the two options that we're exploring right now. Uh, we explored other options with the engineering staff, with the city engineer and also Public Works. One of the options that we considered is encasing some of the utilities that would run through there so that there wasn't any, uh, risk of penetration from one to another. Uh, they didn't like that option, you know, particularly. So now we're, uh, you know, we understand that we just have to give them, give them more width. So we'll either do it on the east side of the property or the west side of the property. But either way, we'll make sure that that is taken care of.
And that's something we find out in the next stage of this process that is to where the, all the pipes are going, that would be a lot of that.
Yeah, the planning staff, of course, won't approve that until we have all of that hammered out. They, they require those easement documents and those easement documents will be provided whether we go on the east side or the west side.
Just, just out of curiosity, yes, I have a question. Uh, in property eleven eight, where we have the irrigation, what's, what, um, are the plans so far in terms of easements? Or gaining access to those?
So you're talking? Eleven R right here and six R where this comes across.
Right.
Yeah, our engineer, uh, will work through that. Um, it may be that we have to do some, um, you know, a little bit of rerouting of that. I'm not sure that will, that's our address. Our engineer's addressing that though. And that will be taken care of. The other one that is if, that, that goes along this side of the property, um, this one, you know, will, will, will be maintained. Um, but I, I don't know how he's going to handle that one. But I would ask our engineer to look at that.
Is that going to interfere with the other pipes going down that side?
No.
No?
No, it won't interfere with those. Those pipes will be, uh, all of the utility pipes that you're speaking of will be pretty deep.
So, so you are going to look at that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we're, we have to maintain those ditches. Uh, they won't, they won't be open ditches. Uh, and so one of the things that we do, uh, one of the things that we will be doing is we will be meeting with, um, we'll be meeting with the ditch company with Western Irrigation and we'll be coordinating all of those ditch. And, and, you know, just so you know, our eleven hundred north project that we're also doing, I've already met with Costa ditch. We're a little further along that with that development. Uh, met with Costa ditch company in their meeting and, and we've gotten everything approved by them. Uh, we'll do the same thing on this development. We're at a stage where, where it's time to do that. And so I asked Justin when I came in tonight to contact information for them so that I could sit down with them and make sure that we adhere to their standards and make sure that whatever we put through there satisfies their needs and requirements. But one thing that we will absolutely not do is we won't interfere with irrigation water going to the residents. And the way it looks with this development anyway, we've talked about this previously, uh, had a previous submission, is, uh, this is intended right now to be phased. Um, and, and so any of those irrigation, uh, rerouting or anything like that that we have to do will be done in a, in a manner that not to interfere with the irrigation flow that is presently happening.
Do those phases come back to us independently?
This is a total preliminary plat approval for the, the totality of the subdivision.
So no, they wouldn't come back to the commission? Okay. So we're just?
They're asking for, you were asking approval for phases?
We are asking for, for, for approval for all of the phases right now.
Okay, gotcha.
And our engineering, uh, I will make a note as well. Most of the red boxes that you see on here looks like a nightmare. Uh, I talked to our engineer today. He's already addressed most of those. In fact, he sent me a, uh, an updated copy late this afternoon. But I knew that this was in the packet that went out, so I didn't want to interfere with that. But all of these red lines have already been, um, are being addressed or have been addressed and corrected on the new revision. And so we're already in the process of correcting all of these, so.
And I wonder if they're wondering if it's an easement. That's parking at the end of the road in the park, right?
Right here, that is parking.
Oh, okay.
That is a parking lot. So as you remember, we have, we have a walking trail. Uh, it's shown in other drawings. And this has a walking trail going around here. There's also pickleball courts over on that side, which we've moved, uh, which was a request from the residents that we moved those away from houses, which we did.
Right.
Um, so we thought that it would be nice to have a little parking over there for people who might, you know, for guests, number one, and also for, um, you know, for people who may be, you know, going over to the pickleball courts. I don't know that that necessarily, there's a parking area for residents to drive over to the pickleball courts.
Right.
But, you know, I don't think that those would be used frequently. The other thing that was recommended and actually asked for in, in one of our planning meetings, in one of our work meetings with the planning staff, is that we mark those no overnight parking. There was some concern about snow removal. And, and we certainly didn't want any overnight parking there anyway. And so that isn't meant to be an over, you know, if a resident doesn't have enough parking, that, that they would park there. This is just meant for temporary parking and certainly no overnight parking.
I see.
But that, yeah, that's not an easement, that's a park.
Nice. So where would the pickleball courts be exactly?
The pickleball courts are, uh, are right in here.
Kind of in the middle.
They were, you remember, we had them over here at one point. So we had them right in that little, which is a perfect little indent for them. But the residents here were concerned about it, so we shifted them over here to get a, get, get a little, you know, distance away from those houses.
That's great. Thank you for doing that then.
Absolutely. Any other questions we have?
Mostly it's always these red lines and the easement on that side.
So if, I'm just wondering if there has been any thought given to the idea of moving eleven and ten R over to where the detention pond is moving? I, I'm wondering, because eleven R has, what, a ten-foot backyard? And if you have an easement there for the water, there's not going to be a whole lot of backyard for that family.
Well, an easement, you know, and I appreciate your concern there. An easement doesn't necessarily remove their backyard. Um, it doesn't mean that they can't plant on it.
Right.
Uh, they can plant grass on it. It just means that if we have, if we have maintenance issues that we have to get in there and fix, which is, you know, fairly unlikely since it is a new development, right? Uh, but if there are maintenance issues, that we have the right to go in and address those and repair those. Uh, I'm not opposed to looking at that. We felt like the detention and detention pond, pond would be a good location. It's, it's pretty quick access to seven hundred north. Um, and it's also the lowest point of the development. It's on the lowest point of the development. So for drainage purposes, it's a little, we felt it was a little better to have it where it is.
All the utilities going through there. If you do have to put a pipe on the other side, you know, I'm going to want to have a pipe on both sides of a house in that development.
Right.
At the same time, because you've got to get three utility lines through, uh, above the property to that side.
Right.
The detention basin allows you room to wiggle those around and get them over to that easement from the rest of the development.
Right, and?
Move that pond.
Yes, and Commissioner, this is, this is probably a good time to talk about this. So where the easement comes along here, if we end up having to shift that to the west side of the property, uh, we would essentially take out part of this shed and then all of those lines would come down this side. So they will just be shifted over to this side of the retention pond.
That gives you the flexibility of just having to get all your utilities out that way instead of Larson Lane.
Well, it was really the whole reason, I mean, there were two reasons we purchased the loved property. Uh, we, we wanted to develop the back part of that property. So as you remember, you might remember, their property comes all the way back here. And so, uh, we're subdividing that property. So it will be subdivided right here where their fence is in line with this adjoining neighbor. And so we'll develop the back part of that property. But we also knew that we needed this. One of the early meetings that we had with the planning staff said that we have to, we had to put our sewer to seven hundred north. And so the left property became a critical element in that. And so that was one of the big reasons why we purchased that property.
Nice. That looks good.
Any other concerns or questions?
No, I was, um, as you know, we're new.
Sure.
But I, I appreciated all the thought and response and courtesy that's gone into all of this. I've read a lot of the history, I've attended some meetings in the past. Um, I'm actually glad to see a high-density, single-family development coming in. Um, because it's something that I think a lot of people are leery of. And they aren't aware of existing high-density. I've lived in one, in Harrisville. And so, um, I, I think it will be a great opportunity for the community to see, um, other options other than all of the apartments and condos and other things that we have going into, meet a variety of needs. And for some, you know, these homes address, um, a lot of different demographics. And, um, like, uh, Commissioner Holberg mentioned, um, some might be turned off by a really small yard and others might say, yes, I blessed them all. And so we'll, we'll get the people in there that are, that are suitable for that neighborhood, so.
Well, I appreciate your comments on that. We feel like there's, there's a real need for this.
Yes.
And you're right, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who have no other choice than to move into a townhome right now or to rent. And, uh, and so I think there's a great need for this. And they, we're getting a lot of attention for these kind of properties and a lot of interest. And I think, you know, a good case in point, you know, um, to your comment, is that my son, I'm helping him buy a new property right now. And, uh, he's moving from, this is kind of an odd way to do it. Most people go from townhomes to a single-family home. They're going from a single-family home to a townhome. Um, but there's just not a lot of options out there, you know, for people with smaller lots and smaller, and, and smaller homes and consequently smaller price tags. And we feel like this is a real need in, in a lot of communities and you, in all of our communities.
That's right. Yep, thank you. You've been great to work with for my, 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 I appreciate your dedication.
Well, I was asked by the mayor earlier how long we've been working on this development. And I told her, we have been working on this development, um, for twenty months. And, um, and a lot of time and effort and money has gone into this. We want to turn out a product that's, that's satisfactory and appealing to the community. Uh, we've tried to do everything that the planning staff has asked us to do. Well, we have done everything that the planning staff has asked us to do. And we've taken the residents' comments at heart. And, uh, not all of those are reflected in the plans at this point. Um, but, you know, any easements, any required, uh, any, any requirements uh, that, that will be pushed out there by Western Irrigation will be incorporated into the, into the engineering drawings. When you submit drawings like this, you can't have everything on the drawings that is going to go into the development.
Right.
Some of those things come up in engineering. Some of them go into the due diligence and excavation groundwork, uh, test pits that you put in. And so, you know, obviously we have to strike a balance. So we want to submit something that gives the, the, the city and the residents an understanding of what goes into a development and what the development is going to look like. But this, this cannot represent everything right now until we go through the full engineering process. So we've tried to incorporate those as we, as we best can. I think this is probably our eighth or tenth revision on these, on this drawing. And so, you know, we've put a lot of, again, a lot of time, effort and work into this in an effort to try to make, you know, make it be a desirable community and a moment that, you know, will be, will fit well in the city.
So have you solidified more firmly the housing types that you'll be offering?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have. We have, we have, well, part of our, uh, part of our master development agreement, which is pretty well complete on this project, uh, actually has, you know, some samples, elevations. And, uh, and we've got a couple of different options in here. Uh, we've got single fam, we've got single level. But we also have, a lot of them are, are two-level, so two-story homes. Um, but all smaller, you know?
Right.
And, uh, you know, very, very well laid out and with nice elevations, you know, elevations on the front and back, so.
Yeah, for those that need a place for downstairs. So that's great.
That's great.
And it is, it is a challenge to, you know, one of the challenges that we have in doing smaller lots and smaller houses is if you do a single level, it's really hard to get everything that you need in there. And so we really struggled. We've gone through a lot of plans. We've we've worked with architects and trying to put together something that's, you know, that's a good fit. And but we do have what we feel are really nice, you know, desirable options for residents to choose.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Parkings made through D are probably just going to be the HOA near the ends of the roads.
Those will all be needed. I talked to the engineer on that. That was one of the revisions that's on the latest set. Is, I guess I better go up here so. Yeah, so those little small parcels. And they're, yeah, they're located here, here, here. Those those will all be needed to the HOA and that'll be responsibility of the HOA.
That just makes sense that the city has to go maintain the tiny little park strip or some brand that has, you know, twenty extra feet of sidewalk.
Yeah, I think it just makes sense to leave those in the HOA. So that's that's our intention there.
Perfect. Other than that, I think the engineer's memo really covers what we need fixed with easements, the playgrounds, the parking. All of their red lines, which I've seen a few revisions of this and we're going to be even more red lines as we do. Then what the playground needed on there, that's why that's crossed off, right?
Uh, the playground will still be there.
Right, it's just not on, it's crossed out and one of the red lines has taken off the plat for this.
Yeah, I don't think it necessarily needs to be on the plat map, so, yeah.
But what I was thinking is just it doesn't need to be on the map.
Yeah, when they do the designs of these, and I've caught a few of these, you know, eleven hundred north, we had the same problem. When our engineer has done his revisions, they're all on layers and we forgot to turn off this on that layer. So but that, yeah, that's taken care of, so.
Any other concerns?
Not yet.
That's okay. I will.
I just don't want to, like, owe that important word, so you have a.
Yeah, I will motion that we grant preliminary plat approval for the Okalo subdivision located approximately two sixty five Larson Lane. Subject to the city engineer's memo dated August eighth, twenty twenty four, the city planner memo dated August eighth of twenty twenty four. And any other measures or approvals or memos that will yet come, I guess. Yes, exactly.
I'll second.
Motion taken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was all of us. Passes goes on to final approval, which happens through the project management and administrative land use authority, so. We'll probably see the revisions. All right. That moves us on to agenda item number five, which is discussion action to recommend, to recommend grant proposed conditional use permit number one forty four for holistic healing and wellness services and coaching. As a home occupation at six zero west, twenty four, twenty five north. And I'm informed the applicant is unable to make it through the deadline days here. I think this one forward. If not, I think that question should table that until such time as she's.
So if they're not, they're ready to table it, even if they fill out their.
So we don't have the information to make the conditional permit happen here. Because we need to be able to ask them questions about where they're parking, what sort of noise, their hours of operation, the number of people.
I thought it was addressed in the application, but I will defer to those units.
No, I.
Because I read it.
I hear you. I mean, it probably would be safer if we had.
So she requested we hold off. She's not under the weather today.
Okay, we'll let her, okay.
That makes it easier then, yeah.
So I will make a motion that we table agenda item number five, which is their conditional use permit number one forty four decision until September.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes.
Thanks, Teddy. That was good.
Which moves us to agenda item number six, which is discussion action recommended to grant proposed conditional use permit number one forty five for art classes as a home occupation located at twenty four oh four north, four hundred west. With Rebecca Street. She is here. Can I come up and Jenny introduce the permit?
Absolutely. So thank you commissioners. So we've received a conditional use application for a art class or slash studio as a home occupation. And because our code requires conditional uses that allow visiting clientele, excuse me, home occupations that have visiting clientele to have a conditional use permit. Let me, I reverse that.
Any impact?
Yes. So we have the applicant here and we have a drawing of the site plan where the property is located. And a brief kind of narrative of what they'll be doing for their business. And we also have our code pulled up for home occupation requirements and the basis of issuance of a conditional use permit for the commissioner's discussion.
So teaching classes in your own doesn't count as a daycare preschool, does it?
No, not doing art classes.
I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know that the narrative included how many students, so that might be some consideration.
I just, in our code, those are the two that have different rules. So I wanted to make sure that it's not under that umbrella. All right. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you for trying to do business in the city. Have you read through the conditional use code?
Um, yeah, I did, um, back when I applied. Um, yeah.
So what are your hours of operation?
Um, five to seven, um, on Tuesday evenings.
Just Tuesday evenings?
Yeah. At least this year.
So the conditional use will be issued for the property? So if you anticipate having expansion, then we'll want to include potential expansion, so. Or you could come back and amend your conditional use permit, but just you are, you can ask for that at this time. You don't have to offer those classes Monday through Friday, but if you want to expand the days of week.
I would say if I extended, it would be no more than two nights a week.
Okay.
Because I I teach full time, so.
Jenny, what's the latest our code says? There's hours in there if you scroll down.
So that's in our seven to ten.
So technically you could teach until then, yeah?
Well, most kids are not allowed to be out that late.
So how many students are we expecting?
Um, I I've done this in the past. I'm just reapplying for a business license, but I I've never had more than twelve.
And are these kids that drive themselves there and are going to be parking their cars on the road?
No, mostly it's, well, all. It's parents dropping them off or kids walking in the neighborhood. Yeah.
So in your experience, when you've done this in the past, there, I can't imagine that there would be much problem just dropping your kid off. I think you mentioned too that they could park right along by the elementary school. If they needed to, and that certainly gives you plenty of parking.
I want to create a traffic jam at pickup and drop off times.
I make a comment. I had two of my older children years ago. I was talking to Mrs. Strobel about this earlier, attend these classes. So I've been through pickup and drop off at the property and it was, there were no issues at all. Yeah, and they're, like she said, it's usually a lot of local students that that walk down the street. So there weren't issues. And I I live just a couple of blocks from there. And so we're all very sensitive to parking and driving things. And her classes are not an issue in the past.
Well, that sounds awesome. And I saw the drawing of where it is in your basement that you're going to be holding that. So you've got a great place.
Yeah, it actually was built for a preschool. That's what they had, the previous owners had in the basement. And I turned it into an art school, so.
So there's no retail sales going on here? You're selling something that's already created?
I'm I'm not selling anything.
That's one of the.
Just the services.
So if when they come, they have to bring their own paints and all of that?
Well, I'm I'm buying and supplying that, but I'm not selling it.
So that's part of the price?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. And then that's a craft or service. Okay, MG on there. Can tell things that are created from a craft or something with the price.
I I can't even see if we would need to really even mitigate any, anything that I can see.
Unless there's fuels from the art, which I doubt can get that bad. There's not going to be any outside storage of anything that people are going to object to.
Exactly.
If there was out there a storage, our purpose is selling objectionable.
I'm going to say those structures. Lowering back edge.
Thank you.
Just making sure. Do we want to place an additional limit on the hours to just evening or should we just leave it as the code?
Just leave it as the code.
I think the code's acceptable, especially if she's aligned.
Not late anyway either, especially with your clientele.
Does she need to make an amendment to say up to two days a week or?
No, so if we did, we could do that as part of the conditional use.
As long as that's something that you think that might be a possibility in the future.
Yeah, me and you.
Too much disruption to the neighborhood, we could say, well, that every day is not going to work.
So would it be like Tuesday, Thursday, maybe or Tuesday, Sunday?
You could just say twice a week, two days a week, and then you can, you can do it's authorized. And you can pick the dates that it works and you could do that as part of the motion so that she can, she can have up to two days a week classes. So as part of the condition. It just expands what she's allowed to do. Doesn't mean she has to.
Exactly.
But we don't include that in the motion when she's allowed every day, Monday through Friday, seven to ten or something.
Okay, so we don't even need to say that.
So if we don't say that, if we don't say that, but she's just visiting the code. But if we wanted to tell them that, then we could. If we felt the need to and some conditional uses we want to, but I think at this point we can just leave this at the code.
If that's the case, the motion can just be subject to the home occupation code?
Yes. Just very, and then the new people, I think I will make a motion that we also grant conditional use permit number one forty five as a home occupation located at twenty four oh four north, four hundred west, subject to the Harrisville City Municipal.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is all of us. So passes. As a reminder, there's a fifteen day appeal period. So if any of your neighbors don't like the decision we just made, they can tell the city within fifteen days and after that you can come in and sign a paperwork and start operation.
Awesome.
Sounds great.
Good deal. All right. That brings us to agenda item number seven, which is public comments. This is your opportunity to take three minutes of our time and tell us whatever you want. There are a lot of comments. I would close all the comment period items. Which moves us to number eight. Commission, that's that follow up. Jenny, do you have any follow up for us?
The only follow up I have is to let the commissioners know that the city issued, we submitted our moderate income housing plan report for the twenty twenty four year on time. It was due August first, so that was the name. So we are hoping for compliance. We we hope we'll we'll hear back from that. As far as staff, that's about all that comes to my mind tonight. But if you have questions, I'm happy to address any commissioners' questions.
I have a question for you. The sewer milling through the highway, how's that coming?
Yes, I was going to ask the same question.
Yes, um, that's been very hard.
Those kinds of questions.
And if you have seen, as of this last week, there's Mount Mass also in place. And UDOT now is taking back over that project for the resurfacing. So the sewer line is essentially done. There's one last board going across that highway that will not impede traffic or any setup. And that is for the water line into the city property. So. Other than that, um, the sewer line is complete. At the eighty nine section. Now all throughout the whole development is still a work in progress.
What they've done under their road so they can start finishing what they started months ago.
Yeah, that's exciting. And then I I love the fact that that they put an entryway in that south part of the property. Yeah, I think that's so great. It's just great to see some movement.
We'll see that. We'll see more of that trips. If you've driven down driven down two thousand, you can see there's actual physical movement at Millennium Park. Bathrooms are going on. We we are, we are seeing some progress out there. Maybe quite a few years that we've been hoping that that progress is going to be able to, yes.
So with the UDOT project, they're moving the crosswalks because they moved their approaches. Are they moving the light fixtures with them as well?
No. If they haven't moved it already. Everything now is just the mill down overlay and new strength. So anything that is, was, yes, was supposed to be moved. And the reason that all happened is because ADA came out with new requirements on their pedestrian apps. And to get the federal funding, if an ADA, an incompliant ADA ramp falls into that section, the fed's say you have to remove it, redo it, set it up different.
This makes me happy.
Makes the crosswalks change a little bit.
Just widens our intersection a little bit.
Well, it also makes it more approachable for people.
Yes.
So the armed residents in general can enjoy a beautiful city. So that's the fact.
Except all the people trying to stop at the stoplight, which would not be much farther away from the light.
And I'll address those with the signalizations.
If they'll actually stop instead of running those, that would be so awesome.
Well, the light here, the light doesn't register you unless you go farther forward and that the crosswalk's going to be in that area where the light registers here. They may have to change that or the light will never register.
They will change that.
So that's why I was wondering that.
So any any anticipated dates for completion of Millennium Park?
It's actually two phases. So part of the phase should be done hopefully completion the first of October. Second phase will start the back half of October. And that's kind of the reroute of the main channel in the back. And things like that. We just do that before irrigation season come to take through its completion.
That's super. Thank you.
Don't think I have any other questions for staff. For our new commissioners, as planning commissioners, we're supposed to do four hours of training a year. So we'll try to find ways to give you your training and.
Jenny's really good about how to identify some just training options for us.
You're starting a little late, so there's no required training to start, but there is required training to keep going.
Um, are there requirements on who conducts the training or just like it's a curfew?
So typically, if it's in the minutes, we do some of our trainings live in our meetings. And so if it's in the minutes, we can include that. And then there are several online options that once you've completed the class, you can either screenshot the completion of that class or you can get a certificate. Some courses will give a certificate. And then there's a variety of land use option trainings. And so we don't necessarily dictate. You can, you can, I can send you the link that we have that provides lots of different options, development agreements to land you, yeah, to a lot of different things that can be beneficial for you. So you can decide which classes you want to take. It just requires four hours annually. We typically do at least an hour and sometimes a little more than that in our, on our own with our open meetings act trainings and our retreat and our, yeah, and our anti discrimination and things like that for nondiscrimination.
Is the annual on the fiscal year or the calendar year?
It, we've been doing it calendar year and we do our retreat in January. So obviously being appointed on the second half of the year, if you try to complete two hours this year, it would be fine. And we'll start it in January.
Thanks.
I recommend you subscribe to the body with the website that's in the bottom of your agenda.
Yeah, I saw that up there today. Like as far as the subscription, I saw where it's supposed to go, but.
Subscribe to the body in Harrisville and go with any commission. And I also recommend doing project management. So that's the administrative land use authority. You can see some of the things coming in the pipeline before they get to us. So you have a little more of an idea of what's coming and what changes have been made. So other than that. That's it. So that moves us to agenda item number nine, which has me calling a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Oh, did you?
I'll motion, I'll enter the motion.
Oh, I thought that was.
He was ready.
I'll I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I got that one. Yeah, hang on.